Today is Wednesday, November 13th, 2013. The time is 10:02. Meeting of the Montague County Commission is called to order. Would everyone please rise for a moment. It's silent meditation and I'll pledge the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Diane.
For consent approval today, we have exonerations. There are 10 listings, $3,504.16 for tax years 2011, '12, and '13. We do share orders as of November 13, minutes of September 18, '25, and October 2nd. Vouchers: General County Fund, $94,003.1056. Coal Severance Fund, $6,006.5137. 911 Cash, $13,009.3073. Kent Muffley, $184.04. Mason Dixon Park, $164.03. Justin at Rich Park, $1,015.72. For a total of $116,256.45.
Move for approval. Second.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Renetta.
The day report center from October 2013, $18,654.28. A supplement to the DUI grant for September of 2013 for $1,2123. DUI grant for October 2013, $6,1156.
You have coal?
Yeah.
Yeah. You touch it.
And I have the vote of the grant for October 2013, $3,9159.
Move for approval. Second.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you, Renetta. I hope to get better. I get those on a regular basis. Drives me nuts. Okay. We're ahead of schedule, but we got Michael Dethorn. Proclamation recognizing pancreatic cancer awareness month.
Thank you. I'm right there. That's all there is to it. Okay. Appreciate it. Thanks for having us here today, representing the... Representing the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network. Proclamation, whereas in 2013, an estimated 45,220 people were diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States. And 38,460 will die from the disease. Whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers. It's the fourth-leading cause of cancer death in the United States. And it's the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits, just 6 percent. Whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is late stage. And 73 percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, while 94 percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. Whereas approximately 1,197 cases will be diagnosed in West Virginia in 2013, including an estimated 39 cases in Monongalia County. And whereas the incidence of death rate for pancreatic cancer are increasing, and pancreatic cancer is anticipated to move from the fourth to the second-leading cause of cancer death in the U.S. by 2020. Whereas the U.S. Congress passed the Recalcitrant Cancer Research Act last year, which calls on the National Cancer Institute to develop a scientific framework or strategic plan for pancreatic cancer and other deadly cancers, which will help provide the strategic direction and guidance needed to make true progress against these diseases. And whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is the national organization serving the pancreatic cancer community in West Virginia and nationwide through a comprehensive approach that includes public policy, research funding, patient services, and public awareness and education related to developing effective treatments and a cure for pancreatic cancer. And whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network and its affiliates in West Virginia support those patients currently battling pancreatic cancer, as well as those who have lost their lives to the disease and are committed to nothing less than a cure. And whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of West Virginia are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection causes and effective treatments. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Monongalia County Commission designate the month of November 2013 as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month, and then Monongalia County, West Virginia. Case is very near and dear to me. I lost my wife of 38, at the age of 38, just less than six months ago. And the WVU Mary Bad Randolph Cancer Center was fantastic. She was one of only 6 percent to survive five years with this disease. We appreciate the support from the county. Thank you.
Move for approval. Second.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Come up here. We'll present it to you and...
Yeah, come on up. Oh.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Sorry about your wife.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I lost my mom for the same reason.
Oh, we appreciate the support.
So I understand.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
She lasted three months.
Is that right? It's a terrible disease.
It is. Thank you for making sure.
Wood regarding proposal for professional service to develop subdivision regulations. Rich?
Okay. As you may recall, several weeks ago, we received bids for professional services to develop subdivision regulations. We had two bids. One from a planning-oriented firm, one from an engineering and firm that was teaming up with local lawyers familiar with real estate law. Yeah, I was directed by the commission at that point in time to see if it would be possible to get all three organizations to work together with a single proposal. I did that. They agreed that they could work together. And the proposal I have presented to you this morning represents their proposal that would include Civic Elements from the planning side, Potestia from the engineering side, and Bowles Rice from the legal side. Their final number for all three was $58,750.
Now, that was an estimated cost. Now, what could make that vary? Anything?
I think that's a pretty firm cost. I made it clear to them that this body had indicated to me that they wanted a firm number. And of course, when we get a contract, we can make sure that that number...
Well, as you said, developed an estimated cost.
Yeah.
And I just wondered if that could be less than that or more than that.
I think that's pretty much what they're looking for. Dave is here, so...
I can comment on that.
Oh, sure. Yes, sir. Please identify yourself.
Dave Sharp with Potestia and Associates and Patrick Kirby here, also with Civic Elements. And that is, it was, it's a combined effort. It is an estimated not-to-exceed price. It would not be more than that. And if it is less than that, I mean, there were several different tasks identified. It's kind of hard at this point to estimate from the legal, the engineering, and the planning side how much effort's going to be involved with each one. So we've done our best to try to estimate that. If it does take less time, less effort, then certainly the cost would be lower than that.
Okay, so this is a max cost.
That's a not-to-exceed price.
But it could be less, but once you got in there and found out what was already there, that maybe you don't have to redo and...
Right. If we're able to use a lot of the information from the, that have been through this process before, certainly it would be a lower cost.
And we do have a number of model ordinances that we've been working with. So that should be of some help.
First, I want to thank you for combining your efforts, because that's something that we needed, and that's something that we need to do more of in that county. My only question is this. I know you're going to be helping with, it says the public hearing. Will you have some form of a public hearing or information so builders and people who will be living in that division will have an opportunity to give some input? I think that's the only question that is my concern, is will there be a process? Okay?
Yeah. There's essentially two phases.
Okay.
Actually, there's more than that. But legally, the only requirement is that this body have a public hearing. But in addition to that, we anticipate having a public meeting. It may not be a formal public hearing before the Planning Commission. I've already been requested by Kay Murray to be on that show, so we'll do that. And I'm sure the Dominion Post will also be running articles on that, so we'll be doing that. In addition, one of the elements that we have requested in the request for proposal is some models, so that we can have a visual display of what a full-blown subdivision might look like, and a visual display of what a minor subdivision that would not require going before the Planning Commission might look like.
Would you be able also to tell if you could work it out, something where when you're on the radio and/or the newspaper, we could have a site where people could write letters or information to if they can't meet it, so at least there's a spot where they could at least have their input heard? Something on that one?
Well, in all of these, in all of the legal notices and that, it specifically says you can send written comments to the Planning Commission office. And we will bring that and make that part of the public record at the point that you have your public hearing.
Well, I want to compliment you for bringing everyone together. That's...
Well, I want to compliment you for bringing everyone together, but I can't compliment the price. We got a price that was half that from, I forget his name.
Civic Elements, which was being led by...
Which was half, approximately half of this. And being responsible towards of public funds, I mean, I just can't find it to where we should spend twice the amount of money that we have a bid for half the cost. No reflection on you all, of course, but I would expect that the person that submitted that bid for, I think it was $25,000 or around there, is going to be responsible for the conduct of how it's developed, for the compliance with law and all provisions as well. So I don't think there's going to be any gap there. If so, we would need to make sure that we close those voids before we sign the contract. But I'm just having, struggling in how I could ever bring myself to approve almost more than twice the amount to accomplish something that we have a bid for.
Could you answer that? Is it possible to answer that question?
Well, the...
Why is it...
There's two aspects of it. One, in the original proposal by Civic Elements, it was anticipated that any legal review as to whether it met the requirements of West Virginia Code 8A would be done by the West Virginia Law School's new land use sustainability institute. So that was, in their perspective, the legal work. With the proposal you have now, they have joined forces with the engineering and Bowles Rice, which is obviously one of the top professional law firms. And the group in that law firm, who was considered one of the top land use law practices in the state, for that matter. And you're simply not going to get the combination of a planning consultant, an engineering consultant, and law consultants at the price you're basically getting a planning consultant for. That's where the price increase comes.
If I may, can I add something to that? I mean, where we're coming from is Potestia and Associates and Bowles Rice both have a tremendous amount of experience working with the developers with subdivisions and around the state, surrounding states, and particularly in Monongalia County. And we understand from that side of it, some of the implications that come from some of the planning documents that they're required to adhere to, and what that means from a development standpoint. And we want to try to incorporate some of those real-life experiences into the project so at the end of the day, we have a document that's not only beneficial for the county to develop the regulations, but also from the developer's standpoint that has to be required to meet those regulations.
One of the problems I had with the one bid that we're referring to was that basically they were bidding to do what you could do if you had the time to do it. Basically, someone that had the same qualifications, the same experience that you've got, that you could sit down and do. And to pay $25,000, $26,000 to basically have someone fill in time with what you could do, made no sense to me to pay that, period. Just like, well, it'd just take longer to get it done, but you know, if that's all we're going to have. But the big fear that I've had with this whole thing from day one is that subdivision regulations protect the public while not harming the developments. And that's a tricky thing to do. It's easy to sit down and, having been to law school and worked with people, there's law school, different programs up there, I'm not degrading them whatsoever, but the fact of the matter is, a lot of times, people get wound up in the books and in the way this state did it or that state did it, and they don't really adapt it to real-world, on-the-ground what has happened in Monongalia County. A prime example of subdivision regulations, I read about in the paper here just the other day on this Oakwood zone. Here, we had to push, and I want to thank the Health Department for getting out there. I think his name was John Welch, was it? John Welch, the Health Department, he got it out there. The initial response from them was, well, we can't do anything. And then thanks to Diane's persuasion, they realized that they could. And they got the Environmental Protection Agency out there and actually respond. Now, here's a gentleman that probably, and I know Mr. Matheny, I'm sure, he was doing everything he thought he was supposed to be doing. And he thought the way he was supposed to do. And of course, I'm just repeating the newspaper, so if the newspaper's wrong, I apologize to Mr. Matheny, but I'm just repeating what I read in the newspaper. He thought he was doing everything just the way it was supposed to be done. Well, it turns out, it wasn't. But it took, it took a special interest, special involvement to get people moving to look at that project. And even though Mr. Matheny is responsible developer here, was something, he had to do more. Well, with the subdivision regulations, those answers should be settled early on in the plan. Now, the only way to make that work early on on the plan is to have the legal minds, the engineering minds, the development minds, not just the planning minds. You also need the planning minds. I'm not, excuse them, because they have a lot of experience, and they know how to do certain services and analyze things. So I think it's essential that we have all the groups and not just have planning, just have a planner sit down and write something up without the input from all those. That's been my concern. Yes, sir, you want to speak?
My name's Patrick Kirby. I'm with Civic Elements. We submitted the original proposal, and we could comply with the section of state code, I mean, per the RFP, definitely. The concept of what Rich came back to us was exactly that. Team with other folks, see how this works together, so that it's not just in compliance with the code that you guys aren't dealing with, other issues down the road that need to be dealt with. But we would incorporate, obviously, the overall, the input of everybody, but... Right. And then we're trying to also avoid variances and, I mean, we don't want to put an ordinance or subdivision regulation in place and then turn around and then have everybody come and apply for appeals to the subdivision regulation, I think. And Rich would probably appreciate that if that wasn't the case, as everybody else would. So it obviously impact the price. I mean, in terms of the legal piece, we do have an existing relationship. It's the land use clinics. We wouldn't be working with the students per se, but they're actually working throughout the state on making sure there's compliance with that particular stake...
Yeah, I'm not degrading them whatsoever. I'm just saying...
No, and I understand exactly what you're saying, just to, and I guess the concept is that instead of, with Bowles Rice, obviously, the cost increases on terms of the legal review, and we can work with them in terms of exactly what they review specifically, but we need to make sure that they were included in each of those sections. And that's what increases the cost in terms of the task, not knowing what aspects, where the input is going to come from the public, or we're going to want additional review, where the developers say, well, we're at a pre-draft stage, and we want you to take care of that now, and we may have a legal question that we didn't anticipate, that we thought was going to come later.
I think it's very, very important for people to accept this, to have the developers and the people that work in this on a daily basis on the ground floor, with being part of that, being part of developing the regulations for themselves. I think that's very, very important. And I think that's what you just said. You agree that that's important.
I mean, we, once we talked to Richmond, we worked with Potestia, I mean, they come up with the proposal, and I understand that there's a little bit of sticker shock and, I mean, if they're...
It's a little more than sticker shock. It's how to spend tax dollars prudently. You know, I, my colleague, I disagree that the priority is the people that live in the subdivisions, not the developers. The developers, the consideration of the guidelines should be reasonable and fair, but the protection is for the people who live there. And that's where the priority needs to lie, as far as I'm concerned. Because all the problems, if we didn't have some irresponsible developers, we wouldn't have the problems that we have in Monongalia County now. So when you start talking about developers, certainly they need to be treated fairly, and they need to be treated with consideration that we're not going to deter their efforts in developing in the county. But when you start having, you start having sewage backing up because of development, you start having problems with water service, and you start having problems with water drainage, that ceases to become priority to the developers. That maintains a priority for the people that live there. As Commissioner Callen pointed out, the EPA got involved in an issue. That issue was a result of developers, not of the people who live there. The people who lived there came in here and cried very loudly about protections for their kids out playing in sewage water. That's my concern. You know, you can intellectualize just about anything. You know, and if the university can provide this county some services without cost to the taxpayers, then we're very fortunate. Now, if they can't provide the service, then that's another thing. But if they're able to provide that service, and it's going to save the taxpayers of this county tax dollars, then I think we should take advantage of that. You know, I come from a, I guess, a little old school in terms of how you manage money, and it's easy to spend someone else's money. But not for me. I feel there's a responsibility here when you start spending taxpayers' dollars. And, you know, I hate to throw this out, but there was a time when a planner would get, Model would get a subdivision regulation from other counties that have it, in Model 1 in Monongalia County after that. I mean, we have a Planning Commission staff, but I think it's reasonable to get someone else involved. And I think we can build in the protections in an agreement. If the person doesn't want to agree to those terms, then we just don't approve the agreement. That's all. If the agreement doesn't serve the people of this county, then we don't approve it, period. But to spend more, twice, over twice the amount of tax dollars, and try to justify it by having three or four different experts. The purpose of subdivisions is to control the character of the subdivisions. That's the purpose of the subdivision regulation. So you have enough room to drive in and turn around, so that you have enough lighting, so that it's safe, that you have access to, on the road, that you have adequate parking. That's what we're looking at. You know, whether a developer, you know, needs to put in a 40-unit bed unit apartment or build a Skyrise apartment, should that be considered? Yes. Is that the priority? No. Priority is to have a safe subdivision for the people who live there. That's my position.
With all due respect, I did not say the people were not the number one priority.
No, I didn't say you did.
Oh, I thought you did.
No. No, I didn't say...
All right. I misunderstood what you said. People are the number one priority. But to me, to pay $25,000, $26,000, $27,000 for a contract, for someone to do something that our Planning Commissioner and our Planning Department already has the ability and skills to do, that's a waste of money. I just, you know, if we're just going to take it from another county and re-rate it and run it by the law school, we don't need a contract, period. Just let the Planning Commission do it. That's my position. If you don't want to involve these, all these other parties that I think are key to making it successful, so we don't get in a situation like we got in with exotic entertainment of having to amend the, amend the thing, amend the thing because this wasn't legal and that wasn't legal and that one, right? I just want to make sure that when we put something on, it's solid. And that was my thoughts. But, you know, I have no problem with saying, forget contracting this, just give it to the Planning Commission. Rich, you work on it. You get it done. When you get it done, you get it done. And then we don't spend any taxpayers.
Realize...
I like that.
Realize that there's two sides to an issue, so then there's my side, which is the third side, which I believe the key issue, you know, financially, yes, I'm concerned. However, I think the key issue is, we want to have implementing subdivision regulations with credibility. And I believe what this plan before us, though costly, is not only progressive, but will be fair to all sides. And why I like it is, I want something that's going to, like you said, and all three of us are in agreement, we want something that we're going to put out there that's going to stand the test to probably whether it's a lawsuit or whether it's concerns or problems. And I believe if we have the three areas working together, coming up with the best plan possible, I think in the long term, I like this plan. I realize it's a little more expensive than what we wanted, but I will, I believe I'll support it. And if I'm permitted, I will move that we support the contract for no more than $58,750. Uh-oh.
No sense of waiting on me. I'm not going to second it.
Oh, I know that.
I know. I know you're not going to second it. I'm trying to decide what I'm going to do. I haven't made up my mind.
I liked your last suggestion.
Well, that's what I'm thinking about. That's what I'm thinking about. I think what I'd like to do is, before making a decision on this, I would like to table this until I've had a chance to go back and review the RFP again and exactly what each step here. And then I may be willing to second it or come up with an alternative. I'm just, I'm in a situation where I understand what Bill's saying. I understand what you're saying. I know what I want, but right now, I don't see it, see it there, and I may be, I may see it once I review all the documents.
If it dies, may I speak, because I stole this at first.
Oh, yeah, you'll have a right to speak, because I would have to ask for a motion to table, so...
Okay. Basically, my concern, with all due respect, and I don't mind you, you know, if you want to table for a week and review the RFP, my concern is I do not want to put it back in front of the planning. And I believe these are expertise that we need to look outside. I believe this is a real serious situation that we want to take carefully. And unfortunately, I mean, the Planning Commission is a wonderful group of people who volunteer their time, but can be influenced... but can be influenced by both sides. I believe these individuals here will try and do what's best for our community, and that's, that's why I'm looking at in that direction. And again, and I'm not putting down, please, the planning commission, but please understand, that's why we're offering, that's why I like that suggestion.
Now, let me take exception to one of your statements. Mr. Wood is very qualified. When he was interviewed and hired, and he's done a tremendous job out there, and I have all the faith in the world in his credentials and his abilities. There, there are people on that planning commission that have all different kinds of area of expertise. So the expertise is on that planning commission. And, and with that said, I'll move that we table it.
I'll second that motion. We have a motion to table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose.
No.
Motion passed. We'll table that until I've had a chance to review all the documents and the RFPs one more time and, and see, see what, what's the best course of action. Thanks, Rich, for your assistance.
Thank you.
Okay, it's 10:32. Hearing for removal of personal representative in the estates of Oscar and Phoebe Schubert. I assume there's two separate estates.
Phoebe's deceased, both deceased.
Okay, but, hi Pete, how you doing? Come on in. Yeah, but there would be an estate for each one of them. Are these, well, I, I'll let you identify yourself first for the record and everything. Come, come on in, see if, we can't give them some seats here up front. Pete, if you can identify your, hey, if, if you could identify yourself and your parties, and you can identify.
I'm Carol Schubert.
Sandra Desborough, I represent Rudy Schubert, who's one of the heirs.
I'm Al, oh, I'm Al Srazansky, Gary's Schubert's wife.
I'm Gary Schubert, counsel for Gary Schubert and Al Srazansky.
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
You want to go on his desk? Yes, correct. Yeah, just so.
Okay, Gary Schubert is the one that moved to the hearing. Okay. So, all right, yes. Explain this to me. We got Oscar Schubert, okay, and Phoebe Schubert, I assume is his wife?
Yes, honor. Phoebe Schubert died October 31, 2011. Oscar Schubert died December 17, 2011, and Carol Schubert was, by virtue of the will, made executor. And really, our petition was filed because since April 4, 2012, nothing's been done on these since an appraisement was filed on that date. And so, you know, it's been a year and a half, and nothing's been done. I attached to the petition two letters that I sent to Mr. Carol Schubert on behalf of Gary Schubert, saying, you know, we need something done on this, this estate needs to be closed. To our knowledge, there are no major complications. Why, it shouldn't be done, and I received no response to my two letters. I also understand that on October 23, 2013, Cynthia Stafford, who is the fiduciary commissioner on both of these estates, she filed reports, they were recorded October 30, 2013, in Carrie Blaney's office, and she recommended the removal of Carol Schubert as executor on both of these estates. And following in line, the appointment of, well, she just basically said, "Removal of Carol Ralph Schubert as personal representative of the estates." And so the fiduciary commissioner apparently agrees that there's been, you know, no justifiable delay in the probate of these estates. And as I said, I sent two letters which went unresponded to totally, and I understand that since we filed this petition, there has been some activity, but not anything major. And so we're asking for the removal of Carol Schubert as executor and the appointment of an alternate executor or substitute.
You, you can move over here if it's easier for you to speak. If you want to move a little bit closer.
Mr. Schubert is the current executor.
Yes.
Carol Schubert.
His name's Carol. Yes. And basically, I came back to care for my parents in 2007 and everything, and I, when I lost my job, and so I've spent from 2007 to 2011 caring for them. I have no health coverage, and during the period of time while I was caring for them, I let my own health lapse. I'm diabetic and have loss of vision. I'm legally blind in the left eye, and I've got macular degeneration and loss of vision in the right eye. And so this has caused me to be slower at being able to get all of the things done. We have been making progress on settling the state. Basically, when my mother passed away, I ended up transferring, you know, her retirements to my father, and then my father passed away. And so dealing with that, getting their probate appraisals and everything, and filing with Roan County, where my mother had property, getting their federal EIN numbers, filing the federal fiduciaries. We just completed their income taxes for 2011, which was tremendous, because I, I can't basically do any extensive reading, I get nauseated and can't see text, I have difficulty working with a compute, on a computer and so forth. But we spent virtually weeks of time going through, trying to find their information in files. Some of that, I think, was on my father's computer, which was out at Madison Healthcare Center and everything, where he was a resident, which was removed by my brother. I requested to have that returned to see what kinds of documentation might be on it that would have assisted me in being able to get things filed. We've, I've been paying, you know, some of their bills and had their tombstones and so forth engraved. So we, we have been making progress on their estate, and now we're waiting for returns from the federal and state government on their taxes to go into their estate. I've set up separate accounts for each one of them and have been depositing any royalty checks and so forth that have come in from my mother's property into those accounts. We've got a report of receipts and disbursements for both my mother, Phoebe Schubert, and my father, Oscar Schubert, here. And do I just give these to you? No.
Could I ask clarification? You said "we" have been doing. Who is "we"?
I've had help from a friend of mine and everything that's helped me to, to be able to read through and find and sort and organize papers, and then I've asked for assistance from my brother, Rudy Schubert, who was listed as an alternate executor, and he has then obtained Sandy Desborough as counsel to represent him, and so she's been assisting too and helping to get the paperwork done. And at this point in time, once we receive the returns on the federal and state income tax, we feel like we could basically settle the other issues. There was some real property, some burial plots at Forts of Sheet. I've gone out with them to confirm the locations of those. There are five, five burial plots, and then there's property, which is some surface rights in Roan County that were my mother's, and some oil and gas leases, which were in my mother's name. We're working then to get those divided. I've contacted Prime Energy Company, which has had the leases on the oil and gas and have been providing royalties to my mother's estate about what's necessary, and they've sent me a letter detailing what they need to transfer and divide up those royalties and so forth, and share between the heirs and the estate. So we feel like within 30 days of getting the taxes back, that we can settle, settle their estate, both of their estates and everything, so.
I have a couple of questions. If I'm hearing you correctly, is that the delay has been caused because of your health problems, and you just can't get things done as quickly as?
And, right, and basically, I'd had no health coverage, and so in the spring of this year, I finally was able to get health coverage through Health Right. And so my diabetes, my sugars were like 300 to 400, and I've got neuropathy, and so it's basically slowed me down. I can't, can't work at night or anything like that.
Let me ask you a question. If, if your health condition has affected
Yes.
your handling of the estate up to this point.
Yes.
How would this commission know that it's not going to affect your handling in the future?
I basically, through Health Right, have gotten my sugar under control.
Tell them that we want him to be my co-executor.
Yes, and we'd like to have my brother Rudy Schubert as co-executor, so that he can make sure that everything does get done, and we've, Ms. Desborough has sent a letter to my brother's counsel indicating that we would propose that. My brother has agreed to serve as co-executor and to have Ms. Desborough represent him and assist me in getting everything completed.
Now, in reading the, the will, I think your brother's Rudy Paul Schubert?
Yes, that's correct.
I think he was named as, should you not be able to carry out the duties of
Right.
the executor administrator?
Right.
Then, then the will requests that he be the second in line
Yes.
to assume those duties?
Yes.
So you're asking that he be appointed as a co-executor?
Yes.
And I do represent him, and contrary to the letters that posing, that Mr. Gary Schubert's counsel said that he represented both brothers, he does not. He never did represent.
I said my clients, and I was referring to my client, Gary Schubert and his wife.
No, the letter, the letter actually says, "I represent your brothers," with an S on it. So if you saw that in the package, he, he has never represented Mr. Rudy Schubert. And he is also willing to be the executor, and he's given me his power of attorney to work, because he lives in Texas, I have his power of attorney to work on this estate, a special power of attorney.
Is he here today?
No, he couldn't be here today.
Okay. He's the one who lives in Texas.
Right, but he would be, he could be happy to be co-executor. He's in daily contact with Carol Schubert now on the estate and, and with me, so either as co or as the executor. I feel, having looked over all the documents, and we've got the up-to-date disbursements and receipts for both estates to hand in today, that within 30 days of receiving the, and making sure that the, the federal taxes, which were filed just a little over a week ago, that once we get the refunds from both of those, that we can do a final settlement to go to the fiduciary commissioner and be ready to close out both accounts within 30 days of receiving those funds.
Well, I'm, I'm quite confused with some of these documents in here, because it says here that the last thing that was filed was the appraisement on April 4, 2012. Or maybe, maybe that's, these, these, this report was filed after you filed your petition. Okay, now, now it makes sense. The other thing I see here that, Pete, you're a client, right, that has a claim that's been, Gary Schubert?
Yes.
Has a claim that's been, it looks like waiting for a trial or a hearing before the fiduciary commissioner for 18 months or a long time?
Yes, and, and I might say that, that when I sent Mr. Carol Schubert those letters that were attached to the petition, I never received a response indicating that there was a problem with his health, and we only learned about this after the petition was filed. So, I mean, you know, there would have been further inquiries, maybe, but we didn't just run and file a petition at the drop of a hat. I sent letters out seeking information and resolution and got no response, that's why we filed the petition.
When did you, when did you join the team?
About a week and a half ago, two weeks ago.
So you, you just joined Mr. Carol?
But I have reviewed all the documents, and I did send a letter representing Mr. Schubert to Mr. Donardi to, to explain, you know, where we were and what we had done, and asking him to have this canceled, so we wouldn't waste everybody's time, but we do see there is light at the end of the tunnel. And Mr. Carol Schubert has, you know, the vast knowledge of all this, and to take, the, the best approach would be to have all of his knowledge of what he's done, because we're really close to having finished and, and then having Mr. Rudy Schubert.
What's your position? What's your position on having a meeting and hearing on his claim? I mean, he has a substantial claim here, and, and he should, that should be paid. I mean, just because there might be ill feelings between brothers, if he has a legitimate claim, it needs to be paid.
Well, right now, there isn't enough money to pay all of the claims that are on the account, and plus, we have a witness that we would need to have here for any hearing on that, who heard the verbal contract between the parents and Mr. Schubert.
But, but, but he's got a claim. He filed a claim. He claimed a long time ago.
Yeah.
He's asked for a hearing. Let me finish. He's asked for a hearing, according to these documents, and has no reason to dispute these documents, for over two years. He's been wanting a hearing on this claim. And there has been, has been other receipts and expenditures. I mean, I, I just, I just, I understand health problems. I've had numerous health problems over such an awful ladder back in 1999. I was totally healthy until then, and then I went to heck since then. I think age has something to do with it, too. Age has something to do. So I understand health problems, so I'm totally sympathetic to that. But I, I would say that I think you do bring light to the end of the tunnel, because you could, you know, she can help you, and your brother can help you do that. But how long do you need to wrap this up? I mean, you've got to have a hearing. I'd like to see the hearing within the next three months.
I'm assuming that, that we'll get a, a rapid return on the federal and state taxes, and that will complete those assets. And I did, when my brother filed his claim, I did appeal that to...
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. There hasn't been a hearing before the fiduciary commissioner.
Right.
And see, you're, you're, you're paying other debts.
Right.
Like very small ones, though.
I understand, they're, they're small.
Right.
But, but, but still, and you all correct me if I'm wrong, but if, if, if you have, if you don't have enough money in the estate to pay all the debts, you can't pay any of the debts until it determine how much the debts really are.
Right.
And so, now let me finish, all right? So what's it, $36,000 or more?
$36,000.
There's a $36,000 claim. Now, there might be enough in there, but you're, and I know you know the... Now, there might be enough in there, but you're, and I know you know this, but for Mr. Carol's benefit, you can't be picking and choosing what debts you're paying. You've got to figure out all the debts, figure out how much assets there is to distribute and then you gotta, if you don't have enough, then you're going to go back in with some sort of plan and you've got to get a circuit court judge to approve that plan for partial payment on debts. I mean, so you've got to get that here. My opinion, of course it takes the majority here, my opinion is, since you've got help now, that we give you a deadline. You should have a hearing within three to six months and you should wrap up this estate within nine months. Is that unreasonable?
No, no, that's very reasonable.
Mr. Donardi, is that unreasonable?
Okay.
Can I ask two questions? One, do you have the letter that you can provide to us later, I don't think it's in here, that their attorney sent to you 10 days ago supposedly?
Yeah, it was around, I think.
Oh, that's fine. If we can get that copy.
It's November 7.
And the other question I would have, and I want to thank, I think it's Gary Schubert, right? I know you've been sitting there and without going into the long, long story, you know, he was allowed to give his side, could you give us a synopsis of what you've been through just to give me a better feeling so there's two sides since you've come up here? Or Mr. Donardi, would you be doing that?
I'd just go ahead and let Mr. Schubert speak, because he said, so I might miss something that he'd wanted me to say.
Yeah, and again, I just appreciate, not that it's super long, but just give us a synopsis of how we can understand your concerns.
Okay. Well, from my viewpoint, my brothers Rudy and Carol are acting to disinherit me from the estate, all right? While Carol was a custodian of my parents, he got them to redo their will, you know, making him the executor and Rudy the second executor. He also had them rewrite the deed on their house, making him a co-owner with right of survivor. So that is not in the estate anymore. That passed to Carol. You know, $300,000 house in Suncrest went to Carol, okay? You know, I personally think that that is, you know, financial elder abuse by a custodian, all right?
You filed a case on that?
You know, that, obviously that is very hard to prove.
Okay, I know, I was just asking if you filed it.
I mean, I haven't.
I'm going to turn it to you, so I know. I want to ask you to try to do it again.
You know, I haven't because it would be very difficult to prove, you know, and very expensive legal-wise, all right?
I understand.
But, you know, this was triggered when my brother failed to follow the wishes of my mother as regards to the distribution of her personal effects. And then we found, things started to unravel, you know, the story unraveled, you know, the things that Carol had done without anyone's knowledge to his profit, okay? So, you know, that's kind of where I'm coming from. And when we saw that he was not proceeding as executor in a timely fashion, you know, this gave us an opportunity to bring this to, you know, a more public forum, to have other eyes look at it and see what you think, you know, as regards the whole issue, if you will. Carol did not respond to my counsel's two letters of inquiry. He did not respond to the fiduciary commissioner's letters, you know what I'm saying? He has neglected, he has neglected everything. And we have evidence that whereas his health is supposedly very severely impaired, there's evidence on Facebook that shows that he had, you know, traveling everywhere and visiting family and friends in Texas and in Wellsburg and you know what I'm saying? So he's, you know, clearly able to have a pretty active life, but he could not even return a call to the fiduciary commissioner, you know what I'm saying? So, you know, this is where I'm coming from, all right? You know, I would like someone else to take a look at this and see what the situation is. And I think that, you know, when you look for a culprit here, you know, follow the money and see where the money's going.
I appreciate your sentiments and your comments, having been through this myself with many situations. The reality is, is the quicker this estate gets settled, the greater opportunity you're going to be able to follow the money and figure out where you need to go, if you need to go any place. To remove someone at this juncture would probably delay this estate for at least two years, just to change the accounting, transfer. So my suggestion, if it's the will of the commission, is that we take no action on removal at this point, however, we direct Mr. Carol.
Schubert.
That he has three to six months to have a hearing on the claim and he has nine months to settle the estate. And if he fails to do so, your petition, Mr. Donardi, will still be here and you can just renew your petition at the end of that nine months if he's failed to complete what he's supposed to do. That's my suggestion. Does that make sense to your attorneys?
I just had a question, Your Honor. He had made a sort of a motion to appoint his brother Rudy as co-executor. I don't know what you want to do.
Are you for or against it?
If it speeds it up, for it, if it speeds it up.
Okay, and the fact that we also appoint his brother Rudy Schubert
That's fine.
as co-executor.
Okay.
Yeah, you need a motion to that effect?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
A second, I think that's a compromise.
I have a motion in the second on favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, you've got three to six months to have that hearing because you have to have that claim, you have no business paying anything until that claim, all the claims are settled. You've got nine months to finish it. Your petition for removal remains here. Pete, now all you have to do is file and renew it if it's not done within nine months.
May I ask one question? You said not to pay anymore. We have two small, there are two small medical claims and in the code, the priority is, you know, to pay medical claims.
Right, you've got to pay your medical bills.
Yeah, there's one for $100, one for $100.
Yeah, you've got to pay medical bills.
Okay.
I wasn't quoting the code here, I was just.
No, 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 I just want to make sure if you said no claims, if we can pay the small medical ones.
Yeah, the small medical ones. And actually, if your estate is large enough that it will, you know without question that there's assets to pay, you can pay. It's just, when I looked at the numbers, I wasn't sure whether there was enough or not and that always put up the red flag. Any other questions?
I just have one quick question, this is my first time doing this. Are we able to, are we permitted to send a letter to the fiduciary saying, "We would like this to be expedited so you could have a hearing?"
Yeah.
Since it's been so long, would that be okay?
We can just do that administrative.
Okay.
Here's Diane.
Yeah.
We'll just have Diane do it.
So we can expedite that.
This was our ruling and we want this expedited.
And I will get you a copy of the letter that
I would like to see.
Mr. Schubert's attorney sent me. And also, do you all prepare the order on this or do we need to prepare anything?
The, you probably should prepare an order.
I can prepare the order.
You want to prepare the order.
That'd be fine.
And then we could forward that over with the letter from Diane.
Right, that would be great.
Will do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I wish my hearing went that quickly.
Do you need your copies of this back or was this submitted for our record? Is this the only?
This is your record.
Okay.
And I do have a copy, it's a filed copy, but if you don't, I didn't give you a letter, a copy of the letter I sent.
Oh, you have the letter already?
We get, yeah, if you get it, it's Debbie when you go out to make copies.
Pete, she's got a copy of the letter.
Yes.
Yeah, you can just give that to her.
Pete, Pete, she has a copy, so Debbie's going to make copies for us. That would be great. Just so we have that on our record.
I will get the order out tomorrow.
That'd be fine. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And correspondence?
No.
Unfinished business. Set hearing date for all interested parties in the estate of Arthur P. Scottschul. That's December 4th.
Yes.
Have you checked with all the?
I asked Judy, she had mentioned, she had contacted them and told them that we were setting up the hearing and no one seemed to have checked to that.
Okay, Judy came up with it, great. I have a motion to set the hearing on the estate of Arthur P. Scottschul for Wednesday, December 4th at 2013 at 10:45 a.m.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in the second on favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Appointments to boards.
Okay, well, I made a mistake last week. Marked it on my calendar.
Made a mistake? Man, I've been here three years, I get to mark one down, right?
One.
A mistake.
Colton Flew was appointed to the Board of Zoning Appeals. He does not live in the West Run Planning District. The name of the Board of Zoning Appeals is actually the West Run Board of Zoning Appeals.
Right, yeah.
So I, in error, recommended him and he cannot serve because he does not live in the district.
So do we unrecommend him?
We rescind your order appointing him.
Right. Motion to rescind the order?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in the second on favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Do we have anyone for that position?
No, we don't.
Okay, we'll have to advertise, what, they have to be, tell Ben what the requirement is.
They have to live within the West Run Planning District.
And it's the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Yes.
West Run Board of Zoning Appeals.
I'll see, if he's at the meeting tonight, I'll see him tonight, but at one time, Joe Panico expressed an interest of being on the Board of Zoning Appeals, he's on the Planning Commission. But I'll see him tonight, I'll ask him if he is, he can notify you in.
Where does he live?
I don't know.
Do you have, would he have to give up his seat on the Planning Commission?
Yes.
Can he be on?
No. I'm not sure where he lives.
This gentleman would love to be on the Planning Commission, yeah.
Well, maybe he just.
Maybe the SWO. Maybe the SWO.
I'll find out tonight if he's interested. Where does he have to live?
West Run Planning District.
West Run, okay.
In the district itself. Okay?
Yes.
All right.
Other appointments, Camp Muffley, four-age advisory board. We have Ed Hawkins, Jeff Orndorf, Gary Ben Hall, William Randy Moore and Gary Hirschman. Those are all five new members established after the bylaws were changed, creating the fiduciary board.
Okay.
I thought we, those aren't the new appointments.
Yes.
Yes.
Those are suggested appointments. What are their terms? Because we've got to create a carrier term. Just by the list?
I didn't think we appointed Ed Hawkins.
I thought you decided to.
No, I was not under that impression. There was a decision and then it was, it was changed. There was another applicant that we decided on. I mean, the minutes would reflect that.
No, we talked about it in work session.
Oh.
Yeah, I thought, I thought two of us, two of us had agreed to.
Initially.
Initially, okay, I didn't, that's what I was going on.
Finally, there was some, there was some input by some people that raised some issues in terms of, without getting, without getting into that.
Yeah, let's just delay that.
Okay.
Next. What else? We got anything else on boards?
No.
How many openings? We've got a number of openings, we've been filling them pretty good now, but.
This one, we have two on the abandoned and dilapidated property board. We have a PSD coming up due here at the end of the month. We're very well caught up.
We're doing pretty good.
Could I bring up, I mentioned you, unfinished business. On the radio today, I heard, and I want to thank Ken you because I did not know that, that the MUB board, and I thought the three of us would want to know this, the MUB board had decided to extend the water lines now, the lines, so it's out to Scott Run District, down 100, and they plan on doing that without a rate increase. And I thought I would just bring that up because
Which rates will?
Yeah, and go in that direction. And we were quite interested and we requested, the three of us requested that. It was done and I want to compliment them for it and I didn't know if anyone else wanted to speak to it, but at the board meeting Monday night, they did state that they were planning on doing that and that's, I know it's been the three of us wanting to bring water and sewage to everyone in Montague County, so I want to compliment them and I don't know if anyone else wanted to say anything.
Well, I'll tell you, in my opinion, MUB has been very understanding with us on dealing with water issues and water runoff and sewage.
Right.
And I'm pleased that they're doing that. I think the people in that area certainly need it. They waited a long time to get it, probably too long. And it's just another thing that I think MUB deserves to be congratulated and helping the people out.
Right.
Yeah, I want to thank, that was one of the things that I, in the hearing on the whole thing down there, that I specifically asked Tim Ball to see if you couldn't bring new life to that plan for the 100. That plan for expansion was the seed, a lot of people like to rewrite history on things, but, you know, I remember things. I might not remember your name, but I can tell you all kinds of stories about you because I watch it, I remember.
I see that.
But that was, that created the expansion and this commission voted to support it and voted to put money into it. But it created a huge conflict in the Public Service District down there because the rates on the existing customers were going to increase substantially. So I praise MUB that the rates are not, they're going to be able to provide the service without increasing the rates. That's always been the number one thing that I have said, it's not, it's not fair to keep raising people's rates with your expansion plans. You've got to be able to figure out a way to do it. And that's the same way with the, with the transfer, the board's transfer, we said the same thing, you know? If that's what the board thinks is in the best interest of the Public Service District and the customers will not realize a rate increase because of it, my position was, I have a problem. That's what the boards are appointed for. And so MUB, MUB came through on our request and I'll be anxious to have them back in here because I've got two or three more requests before them too, so. But thanks for bringing that up.
Sure.
New business, adoption of commercial dog breeders permit, West Virginia, 192026.
We discussed that in work session. I'll move for approval.
Second.
We don't have to have a public hearing on this, do we?
No.
I didn't think so. I have a motion in the second on favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. So Ben, when someone says, "Well, they didn't have a public hearing on it," we didn't have to have a public hearing on it. Just want to make that clear. Okay. Proposal of West TV for videotaping and broadcast of county commission meetings.
That's another thing that we discussed.
Yes.
And the fee, I believe, is $145 a session, which is very reasonable and I'll move for that that be approved.
I second.
I have a motion in the second on favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Motion passed. I want to, I want to thank you at West TV. The only problem is, I can't watch myself on these things. It's like, you quit fidgeting, quit pulling on your hair, lose 50 pounds. I just wish you could airbrush that.
Yes.
You know, I would love to look like Tom Selleck. I can't accept Tom Selleck. Even Nick Nolte would do.
You keep getting my hair that I'm losing. I don't notice how much hair I'm losing until when I look at the camera.
Until you look at that. I never knew that these two commissioners were in such bad shape.
There we go. Okay, request for proposals, GIS mapping proposals to be turned on before 10 a.m. Wednesday, December 4th, 2013. This is a RFP that we wanted to send out to see what the GIS mapping, what the cost might be at. cost might be out there. Before we make any further decision on proceeding, we need to know how much it's going to cost.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Yeah. I'm just, I mean, I'm not concerned about the RFP, I'm just concerned in the long range of how much it may cost us, and that's what I'm, we'll find out.
Yeah, we're not approving.
Yes, and that's what I'm just worried about.
We're just going to get a price.
We got, we got to know how much it costs before we figure out whether we can buy it or not.
And that's why.
That's like, that's like saying, I want a new Jaguar. I'd love to have a new Jaguar. Wouldn't you love to have a new Jaguar?
You want to look like Tom Selleck.
Tom Selleck.
But I won't pay.
I'm not going to ask you what the third thing is.
The mansion to live in.
I never, I never paid more than $10,000 for a car, and I always pay cash.
Wow.
And so if someone's got a Jaguar out there, $10,000 bucks, in good shape.
I was already foreign tramp.
Yeah. Yeah, I was going to say.
Okay. So you got to, you got to be realistic, that's the point I was trying to make. Courthouse holiday schedule, okay. And we know we can't have December 4th off because we just set a bunch of dates for December 4th.
I've just thinking of questions about Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. It falls on a Tuesday.
What's that?
Both fall on a Tuesday.
Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve?
Generally, we do half a day. Last year, we had a full day because it was Monday.
Right. No, well, yeah, right. Right. I, I say, I say it's a waste of money to come in here for a half hour to trade, trade Christmas pictures, and, and that's not criticizing, well, I'm just being realistic. I mean, you come in for a half a day, you fire everything up, I mean, it costs money to fire things up, and then you have to shut it down. My, my opinion is that we take a full day on Monday and that's Christmas Eve, right?
No, Tuesday would be the full day. So they come in on Monday?
Work on Monday, close Tuesday and Wednesday.
Right.
Right. Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, right. Right, you said Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve.
Yes.
Right.
That's my opinion.
No, I, I agree, I'd rather, and I think it just sends a message that, you know, we're supportive, I'd rather them be with their families, I think it's a time to do that, and I think it's a goodwill gesture. Most of the people are not going to go out and come here the day before, you know, but Monday, we'd be able to accomplish what's needed, and then open on Thursday. So I would move that, well, do we have to move?
Yeah, we have to.
Move that we close down on New Year's Eve and also Christmas Eve. So we don't work.
All day.
All day.
What if Santa Claus comes early? No one's here to get the presents.
That's what Diane's for.
Hey, wait a second, you're asking the Jewish person that, so.
And then of course...
He comes to everyone.
We will not be having a meeting on the 25th or the 1st, so.
Right.
Right. Are we going to have a meeting on the day before Thanksgiving?
Yes, I was planning on it.
Okay. Just checking.
Does he need to be here?
Yeah, no, I only have a question, if we're not having it on the 1st, do we have to have a meeting January, because I know that's when we change or vote or something.
Yeah, it just went our first meeting.
The 8th.
Oh, so it's just the 8th, so there's, there's no official date that you have to have?
We have to elect officials, appoint to, appoint committees and...
Okay. So we can do it a week late?
And set the holiday.
Okay.
And we just do that at our first meeting in, in February.
Whenever, okay.
Some of these counties only meet four times a year, they do it in February.
Yeah, well, that allows to go to the, the bowl game.
The bowl game, yeah.
The football game.
So we are meeting Wednesday before Thanksgiving?
Yes.
I guess, since you said we're on...
November 27th.
Mm-hmm.
I, I was just asking.
It's on my calendar.
You've already got it fixed, okay.
Okay, I'm sure the employees thank all of you for...
Not yet.
Oh, okay. Need a second, yeah.
Go ahead.
To the original motion.
What's the Jewish New Year?
I don't know, I'll have to look at, well, that was back, we've already passed, we've already passed that, 57.
You're one of them pretends. I'll second it.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you.
West's were on holidays.
Thank you, some of the employees.
I, I, what, what can we do to pass blue laws for Thanksgiving Day? I find it outrageous that retailers are open for shopping on Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving.
That is, to me, it's outrageous, and they, they quote it in there, they get, they get in there and say, well, well, people, this is when people want to shop. No! It's about the employees, dragging the employees away from their family on Thanksgiving Day, and doesn't have to do anything with what religion you are.
Right.
For Thanksgiving Day, and to say, oh, that's what the people want, baloney. I would boycott, I would pass a blue law to make all non-essential businesses shut down for Thanksgiving. People need to be with their families. You want to know why people are stabbing each other, shooting each other? Because they have no family support. Mental health problems, other happens, the solution exists in the family, the family needs to be together. Our employees are better employees when they have time with their family, and they spend time with their family. That is what makes a community. Families make a community, and a community makes the rest of us. And I just find that that is cheap and low life on part of these big retailers to open up and sell even on midnight the day after Thanksgiving. I find it outrageous. They'll come and buy afterwards. If you're not open, I guarantee you, the only reason why people come out is because they put all these big promotions, we're going to, if you come on Thanksgiving, we're going to give you this sale. Well, with the economy the way it is, we need to spend more time with our families. That's my preaching on that, Mo. You have any comment on that?
Very good sermon. No, I, I agree with you. You know, you know, once we got away from stores being closed, commercial business being closed on Sundays, it sort of diluted the regiment of the seven-day week, and, and... But I don't think there's anything we can do about it, but...
No, I just wish we could pass a blue law.
Well, we could complain, but, if anybody will listen, but...
Tom, you have a...
No, I, I'm very disappointed, I, I mean, and now I will also, especially being the Jewish faith, we've always been honored to alleviate or, when people had to go during Christmas time, and that's one thing my mom had taught me, that we had gone in and helped people so they could be with their families. So I'm just, to me, Thanksgiving is universal for everyone, and it does bother me that, not that they're open, but you're right, they're, they're basically forcing people to have to work, and, and it's unfortunate. I understand if there's a football game and you're going to the football game maybe, but I, I can't understand that, it, it's wrong. It's just totally wrong.
Thank you. Discussion of need to upgrade 911 equipment.
These two gentlemen are impatient.
Oh, are you on the list, eh? You're up next?
Your hair looks very nice today.
Oh, there's another $10,000.
Okay, what do you want?
Just what we discussed in work session of the, the needed upgrade to, to the hardware.
You know, and we're, at some point, we're going to have to look at, at the phone fees and...
Yes.
I, I mean, because we get to replace an equipment and, and expanding and doing some other things, there's no question that it's going to inflate the budget of needs. So I don't think we have any choice, that at some point, we've got to put that on our agenda to, to examine what we want to do with that fee and how we're going to look at raising it and how much it needs raised. But obviously, to provide adequate services and have adequate equipment, I don't think we have any choice but to look at raising that fee.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. We discussed it in work session, but just briefly outline what you're doing and why you're doing it, because the cameras are...
And how old the computers are, that's what I want you to explain.
Basically, the, the hardware that, that needs upgraded at this point is, is the servers, it's the, the heart and the brain of, of the center that runs all of our computer operations. It is now about five and a half years, so it was around 2008 or so when that was replaced. There are machines that run 24 hours a day with a lot of information that's put through that, and it's just come to the point where they are, we can no longer Band-Aid fix them or do minor upgrades. Plus, with the next generation 911 that is going to be imposed nationwide on us in order to be compatible with the equipment that we will be receiving here in the future, it's best just to go ahead and, and replace that equipment now.
Is there any possibility we can get some funding from Homeland Security?
We will apply for any grants that we have, but currently, right now, there is none. As a matter of fact, I just had a meeting yesterday in Charleston, and several of the grants, the one grant that helps support our salaries from the Homeland Security, because there is no federal budget, that grant is still being held, and, and that should have been paid several months ago.
Yeah, I, I think we're, we're all in agreement. First of all, anyone who has a, even a PC and realizes they're five and a half years old, yet yours is running year-round, you know, completely 24 hours a day, and, no, I'm glad that we're, we're going to be able to do this. I do also want to say publicly, because what, in case, put on record, the three of us have talked about, because I know the citizens were interested, and I think something that we are going to do, the three county commissioners, is contact WVU. We feel that there really is a legitimate need for some sort of possible fee that we're going to request from the university, because the students, and I want to get it real clear, they pay a 911 fee for their phone, but back wherever they're from. And really, they're here eight months out of the year, they use the phone, and we'll also be doing the enhanced 911, and that's something I think the three of us are going to look at.
A minimal fee.
A minimal fee, but negotiation that we could also, and I think then everyone's paying the fair share, and I think as long as everyone sees that in the community, no one minds that, because the bottom line is this, when you want an ambulance or you want the police there, it doesn't matter how much it costs you, you want them there as soon as possible. And I think the three of us talked about that, and you were also willing and supportive, and I think it's a great idea. So I will move that we pay, what was the?
$175.
$175,000 for the heart and soul of the computers.
I thought we was going to figure out a way to pay for it, though, first.
Well, if you put a second, I'll talk about that.
I want to talk about it before the second.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
You're up.
No, I mean, there's no question that the equipment is needed, but we, we've tossed around and thrown around in terms of increasing the, the phone fee and everything else to help pay for it. I'm just concerned, if we approve an expenditure before we know the source, I think we need to know the, the source, where that money's going to come from, that funding's going to come from, and are we going to be successful with WVU? And then, you know, we may want to look at enhancing other than that, and I'm sure that, that you could use that.
Well, yeah, as I, as I explained in the, in the work session, I mean, it's basically a five-step process, there's five different areas of the center that we'll need.
I'm not opposed to funding it, and I'm not opposed to replacing it, it, it's just, I would like to see us establish funding sources first, before we obligate out of the budget $175,000 that we didn't allocate in this current year.
Did you, did you have a, a revenue plan once before?
We had, what we had discussed was that you would make a budget revision out of current building funds, and then once we established either the 911 fee increase or the...
You would pay it back.
Fee from WVU, that we would make, we would make that payment back to the commission.
And then you have the money in your budget, you know, on the other side for the software?
Right, we have the software that needs to be upgraded, upgraded as well, and we have allocated back that to, to take care of that request, which was about $124,000.
And that's exactly what I was going to comment, that that, well, that's what we had suggested out of that, and then, but then we didn't want to do it just one here and one there, that's why we're going to all come back with an actual plan and proposal, so everyone can see where that money is going. I think as long as the people understand where the money's going, and we were first going to take it out of building and then reimburse it as we went down.
Well, I don't, I don't think, yeah, I, I think the urgency is such, based on the fact that you reported that, what, it went down a couple times where they had to use pen and paper?
Yeah.
And just, they couldn't, they couldn't do anything old-fashioned, like, they did have telephones, though, they didn't have to use tin cans or, or Buffalo Bill, didn't Tony Express it out, did he?
No.
Okay, that's good. Just checking.
So I will move again, the cost.
Don't have to carry a pigeon either?
We could try.
I, you know, I do this with, it's not easy for me to do this, because, you know, we, I can't help but think of chairs at Camp Muffley, buying chairs before you know where the money's coming from, particularly since we've got a lot of construction going on, and, and, you know, of course, we got till July to get something accomplished here. I, I think we can't afford to have a breakdown in emergency services, so I, I'll second the motion.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, and then, then you'll be coming back with some overall funding plan?
I, I, as I said, I will get in touch with Chief Roberts.
Yeah. Great, good.
Try to schedule some of those.
I always forget the TVs there, but there's Jimmy Smith and Mike Wolf. Appreciate you coming down and your patience. I hope some of it was exciting.
Yes.
Jimmy...
Into your sermon.
Yes, okay.
You only had to poke Jimmy a couple times, he was snoozing around. We appreciate, appreciate your all's work.
I, I think also, Bill, just to make clarify, so the public and the newspaper knows, we are doing the hardware at the same time that Mecca is paying for the software. So that's why, and that's why, Bill, you know, I don't want to speak for him, but that's why he, he said he was willing to consider that, which he normally doesn't do, and that's why we were doing both at the same time.
Yeah.
And that's why.
We need to do them both.
Yes, so I want to clarify that. So you're, and how much money are you putting, just so the newspaper has it?
About $124,000.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Portland County Commissioners. Bill, have anything?
No.
No? Tom, you have anything?
Yeah, just one quick one, I do want to give you an update. The sheriff gave me the individual, the call from Signs and Signals from the State Department. I called him, we had a enlightening conversation of which he was not aware that this has been going on for so long, and I had a TS number that he didn't aware, which meant that there was already a plan already on that. He did not understand why he wasn't, he was not being permitted. He said it was above his grade to make those minor adjustments. I do want to thank the newspaper editorial staff, I know it's very rare that both the editorial staff and myself, but agree that, you know, it is a safety issue, and I believe the three of us have been working on this way before I was on county commission, and I want to make it clear, we've been working on this, I've been since 2000, 2007, we've had the governor, we've had everyone, and hopefully now, maybe with the newspaper and the extra press, we'll be able to, to get it fixed. But I did talk with them, he is ready to go, the man, the individual, as long as he gets the approval. I was wondering, he gave me another name, I have it, I have it now, Tim, someone from I was wondering, he gave me another name. I have it, I have it down, Tim, someone from the state department. And I was wondering if with your permission, we could send one more letter out to him. I'll get the name and the information. I'm also going to talk to the city manager, Jeff McCorsky, who I believe is also endorsing this, to try one more time to get some minor changes there and also possibly lowering the speed limit, which is, was our other option. So again, anything else, but I know the three of us have been trying, and I, before I die, this is going to get changed. Go ahead.
I hope you're healthy.
I, I can't help but think when I was clerking for Starcher when he was a judge here. Patterson Drive. DOH was adamant that, that's a major four-way thoroughfare. It's 45 miles an hour to get to the Colosseum and back. And the, the city is messing it up by allowing people to build on it, to, to build and build access. And I wrote it, I wrote the, the opinion for Jim Starcher. They were adamant. I think it was Burger King that got sued because someone was pulling out of a lot, a lot there and turned left and hit a Toyota that rolled over and there was deaths there. All these people were sued. DOH was adamant. It's 45 miles an hour. Well, after a horrible death, then they decided in their wisdom that 35 was sufficient. So now it's 35. Let's pray, and I bring that up, let's pray that that's not what they're going to wait for on this until we have a horrible fiery crash that, that kills, kills people. It's a bad intersection. I've mentioned before, just in the last four or five weeks, I was almost hit twice at the same time, at the lower and then at the upper. Because one was coming out and I stopped. And then since I stopped, I started to, to go. This guy coming down the hill thought I was stopped, so he cut in front of me. And I was like, whoa, what is going on? This is, it's crazy. So let's hope they fix it. That's really all I have. I'm just joining that. Sherlock.
Mark is at Flatworth attending a PBC meeting. And he wanted me to announce that the staff is in the process of keying and closing the personal property assessment returns. If anyone has not returned their personal property assessment form, please sign it, date it, and return it. If you have any questions or need another assessment form, you can contact the assessor's office at 304-291-7222, and someone will be glad to help you.
Yeah. Ben, you got all that?
Recorded all of it.
Now, now, they're, if they don't return it by a certain time, is there an additional fee?
There will be when they come in and get a supplement. It's $25.
And that's, on what date does that kick in?
That's if they come in after the fact, say like next year sometime.
Oh, sometime after January 1st? Okay. So they need to get it in before Christmas?
Correct.
Okay. That's good. Thank you. Any other elected officials here? Diane? Anything? What are you doing here? I thought you were.
You're on vaca, aren't you on vacation?
No.
Did you get it here?
No.
No, that's why he's back.
Bobby here?
Yes, sir.
Jamie?
Yes, sir.
Mike, you got anything further?
Just, we, as I said, we went to that meeting yesterday in Charleston. And I was elected the vice president of the state's Homeland Security Emergency Management Council.
Really, congratulations.
Doing a lot of work with, my job will be to represent the counties to the legislature and to the state office with, with whatever issues come up, so.
Hey, you know, we're getting all these bigwigs from Montague County running the state stuff and national stuff.
I can, I can sign my name up there if you want.
Yeah, I, I need your autograph before you.
This one gets the this is.
That's right. And make sure in the autograph, put nice hair. While I still have it. Okay, comments from the public. Any comments from the public? Comments from the public. Have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn? Second.
You want to keep on going?
I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.